Evening, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to public audience, I need to amend the agenda to add two items. One, we'd like to move up Kristen Formanek's update from other business to the end of presentations because she needs to get home.
So move, oh, good.
We'll do them both together. And the second one is to amend the agenda to authorize the first select woman to submit an application for a historic preservation enhancement grant through the state Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO, for a study to determine the viability of a multi-property submission for inclusion in the state registry of historic places.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is amended, and we'll put the SHIPO before approved tax refunds. All right, with that, we will move on to public audience. Is there anyone who would like to speak for public audience? Joan.
Joan Cole, 26 Woodhaven Drive. We are presently at the end of a 30-year journey with the appointment of a professional town manager. Since this is precedent-setting, I think we should have a ceremony by passing the torch in keeping with the Winter Olympics for First Selectman Lisa Heedon to the appointed town manager. I hope that the First Selectman, Lisa Heedon, would put to rest her position that this appointment is an experiment. Although First Selectman Lisa Heedon has continued to grieve over the appointment of a professional town manager, she should pass the torch by accepting the reality that over 6,000 residents voted for a professional town manager. I am concerned that the town manager executive search committee includes the deputy director of administrative services, Melissa Appleby, who will continue as an employee when the town manager is appointed. It is odd that an employee is an active participant in the selection of a boss. The appointed town manager will acquire a four-page job description that is overwhelming in accountability. I am concerned that residents in Simsbury have been omitted from the job description of the town manager. Residence in the town is a requirement of many town managers, giving the person the ability to become an integral part of the community. I would like to congratulate Eric Wellman on his unexpected win over selecting Mike Payne. We will have a young, energetic person to represent the face of Simsbury in the position of first selectman. On November 5th, 2017, Attorney Houlihan, a political operative, wrote a letter to the zoning enforcement officer regarding the Redstone Pub's violations of zoning regulations at their Oktoberfest event on October 14th, 2017. After being told that there was an Oktoberfest event at the Big Soul Pub with tents, alcohol, and a banned parking lot of the Redstone Pub, I asked the zoning official if they had a gathering permit for Oktoberfest event. I was told they did not, and they were in violation of zoning regulations. On November 6th, 2017, Attorney Houlihan filed a request under Freedom of Information Act requesting all information pertaining to the professional information leading to the violations of the zoning regulations. With many postings on public media and eyewitness accounts, the zoning enforcement officer did her job with letters of violation. Attorney Houlihan, as a political operative, cannot change the public record and should be ashamed of his conduct in requiring many employee hours of gathering information to defend his client, Maude Lupkin, owner of the Redstone Pub's alleged illegal behavior. It appears that Simsbury is losing several businesses. The Dunkin' Donuts shop in Andy's Plaza will be closing, and the Come Incorporated, the New Dunkin' Donuts in Antonio Plaza will complete. The urgent care facility in the north end of 30 Dawson Crossing will be closing, and the Little City Pizza will close in Simsbury and move to another town. Simsbury has many vacant retail spaces that might be attributed to the 39.9 mil rate. Simsbury has the highest mil rate in the valley and must be reduced to become competitive. The War Memorial at the library now has a plaque with correct spelling and is less slippery. However, there are plaques with dates from the Revolutionary War to the Vietnam War and the Global War on Terror, 2001 to whenever. What is the Global War on Terror? And who is participating in it? And when will it end? This is an agenda item under section action, Selectment Action, aye, Simsbury Regional Probate Court. This will be a capital request. Judge Becker's letter states, quote, "The Simsbury Regional Probate Court recently received threats from an individual in the community. The individual has been making harassing calls and visits to the court for some time, but recently he has threatened to perpetrate violence upon the court staff," end quote. Judge Becker, as a result of these actions, has requested security upgrades at the Simsbury Regional Probate Office. In consultation with the Simsbury Director of Public Works, Roy, the Simsbury Regional Probate Office has obtained estimates for the installation of a sliding glass window, bulletproof, to be installed over the court's counter. With all the discussion about gun possession and safety, the Simsbury Police Department has over 80 gun permits taken out in 2017. Many years ago, the public had access to owners of gun permits. There was a change in the law prohibiting access. Since Connecticut is an open carry state, I would like to have the law rescinded so the public would have oversight on people with permits, the safety of the community.
Thank you, Joan. It's been over five minutes. Could you please wrap it up, please?
Since I have a question, I piloted a drone.
Thank you, Joan.
I feel the town and the police department could use a drone for surveillance and tracking people off the road.
Joan, you are speaking beyond what we give other residents.
And I just want to say that all of my comments will be posted in Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Cole, News Feed on Facebook, and Simsbury forum topics. And I think you ought to look into getting a drone. It's something that most towns are getting now.
Thank you.
Put it in your...
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public audience? Yes.
Oh, I have to sign up, gee. Sorry about that. I don't, and I don't have to sign. I guess.
We have it here. Thank you.
I'm Dave Chase, 39 Woodhaven Drive in Simsbury. And the subject tonight is old growth forest designation. Now, I'm here tonight because I've heard you're being asked to consider an old growth designation for one or more of Simsbury forests. And I hope you support this unanimously. Making this designation would be a wonderful way to celebrate our town's pioneering spirit. And it won't cost anything to put in place. It will add another dimension to our forest management. The designation is supported strongly by Eric Camerling of Connecticut Forests and Parks, formerly of the Farmington River Watershed Association. Eric no longer works in Simsbury, but he knows the town very well and cares about it very much. Eric wrote an extensive letter of support and has been dedicating his time attending meetings in Simsbury to help support Simsbury in the designation as the first town in Connecticut to have it. The old growth designation has no legal restrictions and will only be a positive for the town. The only costs will be simple maintenance for safety. It's an opportunity for ongoing education, will help bring more people to appreciate our town, and to add to the quality of life for everyone in our community. Simsbury does not have a large enough area of woods without trails to have a fully effective old growth forest with exactly the right habitat for certain animals. However, letting the trees and plants grow through their full life cycle in selected forests will provide a different kind of environment that is undisturbed and less prone to harboring invasive species. Everyone appreciates peaceful places with trees that have grown for ages and without the scars of logging. Simsbury became a bicycle-friendly town. Let's become an old growth forest-friendly one, too. I heard there was also a possibility to have a national champion tree with a pinch of sickle wood. And these are all wonderful things to celebrate as a community and share with visitors. Thank you for your service on the board, and I'm excited about the town having an old growth designation. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience? Mr. Kalasch.
Robert Kalasch from Simpson Drive. I'd like to take a minute or two to congratulate those that have won election and to convey my condolences to those that served, served well, and unfortunately, the luck of the draw, other people, new people are coming in. But your service was well taken, and I admire all of you for the service you dedicated yourselves to the town. Now, there's a few things I'd like to bring up. The first thing, Ms. Cole, to answer your question, the war on terror, it's still going on. I have friends that are being killed in the mountains of Afghanistan. A general lost his kid, well, he's not a kid, but he lost his son, ah, oh, about a few years back. But people are dying, so it's a real war. And I hope the town gives the monument its due respects. Now, I have a few things that I'd like to more or less mention to you. And I'm not crying sour grapes, but I think my so-called colleagues, my opponents, those that were appointed and served on the cable television in Simsbury were very disingenuous to me when they sat and they showed their pictures and took their count and they gave their two-minute speech. And when it came my turn to give a two-minute speech, I was told I wasn't going to be able to give a two-minute speech. And I was barred from the giving my political speech. And don't look like with wonderment. You were all there. You all had your two minutes. You all ran your all, all your paces. The first selectman, the Democrat and the Republican, and it went right down every office that ran on the Board of Selectmen. For some reason or other, maybe it could have been Mike Payne's being a director down there, maybe it could have been Mr. Mason being a director. I don't know. I have my suspicions, and things have a way right in themselves. And that's the way I was treated. So I, you know, I'm not looking for sympathy, but I just think you're totally unfair to be real. Now, the other thing I think I'd like to go into is, there's a couple of things that are troubling me. We're out, and we have a gentleman here that was addressing the woods and the lumber. What happens to that lumber that Mr. Toner is having culled where they're coming out and they're culling the trees? And some of them are gorgeous trees in their beautiful lumber, some of those trees. What happens to that money when they take those logs to the sawmill and the sawmill pays them for them? Where's the money? They'll be here in another month or another three weeks. He'll be here asking for money for the November walk, saying that he's broke and that the Farming Arts will be out of money. What's going to happen to that money that goes to the lather? I don't think you're being very frugal in watching the town's expenses. And I think to hit the people with a 39 mil rate because some of them want to go out and buy an automobile and to do that, I think is very unfair. There's no reason to have a 39 mil rate on top of the property rates that they pay here. And it's just greed. That's all it is. It's greed at the Board of Education, and it's greed right here. And the people that should be being paid, they don't get paid. And I was saying at the veterans' dinner, I talked to a few people, and I said to them, "Do you know what? We haven't hired a policeman in five years." And I know somebody's going to say, "Oh, but we have half a policeman and we have a half a lady policeman." We haven't hired a policeman in five years, and we've put in, the Greenberg property is finished now. We have people moving in there.
Thank you, Mr. Kalaschman.
Thank you for your time.
I appreciate the feedback.
Would you like my signature, Mr. Cook?
I think we are all set, Mr. Kalaschman. Thank you for offering.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience? Okay, seeing none. It's a big day here. It happens once a year. We have Mary Turner. Why don't you come on up? Susan, are you helping with this, Susan? Whoever needs to come up to be recognized, why don't you go up with Mary? We have our annual recycling award, and I want to recognize members of the recycling committee. Mary, you want to introduce members that are here from your committee?
Mary Turner, chairman of the recycling committee, Love and Barnard Drive, Simsbury. This is our annual award for recycling, and this is the award in framed. It's given to the public library and Susan Ray, the adult program director. By the way, this frame is from our swap shop. We always keep a lookout for any of these sizes of frames, and it has been reconditioned by my husband and refurbished, so now it's in a new condition.
That's great.
This award is for the Repair Cafe concept, which seeks to provide education and assistance to residents in conserving resources by repairing and returning household devices, equipment, furnishings, and objects of all kinds for continued service in their homes and activities. From the recycling committee's perspective, this publicly available and free educational venue significantly advances the reduce and reuse recycling goal for materials that otherwise might enter the waste stream that Simsbury is working to reduce. Our full support and encouragement is extended to the sponsors in scheduling future Repair Cafe events. Please join us in thanking Susan Ray, Joan Nagy, and Sarah Lovensager, our community repair volunteers, volunteers from the library's charity sewing group, the Simsbury Lions Club, and Big Y for making the Repair Cafe event possible. Congratulations, Susan.
Susan, do you want to say anything?
Well, the Repair Cafe concept is something that they do grow wide now, and the object is to introduce arts that people don't have anymore. They don't have the skills anymore to repair things that they have in their home. So we wanted to bring that to Simsbury to teach people that, yes, you don't have to just throw it away. You can get it fixed. And we did about 71 people for four hours.
Very successful. Thank you for bringing that to the town. We're very grateful. And thank you for recognizing Mary.
Thank you.
And to all your committee members, thank you. Okay, coming up next, we have the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association Operational Review by Melissa Appleby. As you'll recall, the board asked Melissa to go back and take a look at trends, financing, and other information related to the ambulance's request for supplemental funding and perhaps operational or capital funding in the next fiscal year budget. So this is anticipation of the next budget cycle, and Melissa will give us a review. We also have Mike Delahanty here from the ambulance association who can answer questions as needed. So Melissa, thank you. It was a lot of work. We appreciate all the time you've spent on this.
Thank you. So the purpose of this presentation is really a continuation of the conversation we started last spring regarding Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association's request of the town to support some funding for incremental expenses. As we discussed since Mike presented at that time, there's been a steady increase in EMS calls over the past several years. So to meet that increasing demand, SVAA had made some operational changes, hired some additional staff for its primary ambulance, as well as implemented a secondary ambulance during this year, weekday hours. So last spring, this board did approve that interim request, the board of finance ended up approving it in the amount of $50,000, as Lisa said, with the understanding that we would conduct a more thorough review and collect some information that could be used during the upcoming budget cycle. So that's where we are today. I have some slides to share with you. First, a little introduction background, history on EMS in Simsbury, a look at the staffing structure for SVAA, then we'll get into some data on call volume, response time trends, and then some financial trends. And finally, I wanted to go a quick look at comparable communities, surrounding communities, what they do in terms of EMS, what their models look like. So the secondary ambulance did start running in September 2014 as sort of a variable resource on, you know, the latest, whenever there was resources and staff time available to fill shifts on that car to supplement coverage during the busy weekday hours. As of October 1st of this year, it is scheduled to run five days a week during the daytime. A little bit of history, SVAA was founded in 1957. It became our official basic ambulance provider in 1989, became our official paramedic level or ALS level provider in 1997. The town did contribute to its capital campaign 2000 when SVAA expanded its facility. It was a big capital project that the town did provide some contribution to. I did want to note that in three years in the early 2000s, the town did contribute $10,000 in each of the three years, 2002 to 2004, to support SVAA. And then, of course, this past spring, the interim appropriation of $50,000. So this slide is really intended to lay out who is responsible for what. So the State Department of Health is actually responsible for regulating EMS in the state of Connecticut. They assign the EMS provider to each PSA, and a PSA is basically just a geographic area. In our instance, it's just our municipality. And they are responsible for reviewing our local EMS plan, which the town is required to revise every five years. So as a town, it is our responsibility to review and revise our EMS plan every five years. And that's really the document where we establish performance standards for our service providers. So the police department as our first responders, and then SVAA as our basic ambulance and paramedic level. So SVAA does hold the official PSA for both basic ambulance and paramedic. And we do have mutual aid agreements. We can't end it grandly. So a little bit of the staffing structure of SVAA. The primary ambulance, which they call Car 10, that's staffed weekdays during the day by a contracted EMT and in-house staff paramedic. During the evenings on weekdays, it's staffed typically by a volunteer EMT and an in-house staff paramedic. And then on the weekend, it's a mix, depending on availability of resources. Car 17 is what they call the secondary ambulance, and that operates, as I mentioned, as of October 1st. It's scheduled to run five days a week during the day. So prior to that time, it was running, as I mentioned, on a sort of variable resource basis. And just as a frame of reference, from September of 2014 until June of this year, it had done 228 shifts and 200 calls. So that's just about one call per shift that it's been averaging. So getting into some of the call volume trend, this is actual data through 2016. The past five years, we've seen an increase cumulatively of 19% from 2012 to 2016 in total calls. You see it broken out here. The blue is SVAA. Those responses have gone up about 15%, and the mutual aid is in green, and that's gone up about 38% over the past five years. You may recall, Mike in the past has represented that SVAA typically responds to 85% of all EMS calls, and that is really shown here in the data over the last five years, and I did conclude here to date for 2017. SVAA has typically responded to 80 to 85% of all calls, with mutually responding to the remainder. So basically, what this says to me is that even though the call volume's been going up, that split has basically remained the same. Total calls by day of week, you've seen something similar to this before. This just clearly demonstrates that the highest call volume is occurring Monday through Friday. We have a similar chart, not in this presentation, but time of day, actually follows the same trend. So it really is that the highest demand is during those weekday daytime hours. Some of the response time data, this does come from our police dispatch system, and I broke it out SVAA versus mutual aid. You would expect mutual aid response times to be higher, so I just thought it was worth a laugh to separate those two out. So just a caveat on the data, it looks very specific, but these are averages. I would even call them estimates. It was a very large data set. I did my best to pull out all the outliers and everything, but, and clean it up, and it looks very specific, and I just want to emphasize that these are averages. So in terms of total response time, that gray line at the top, you can see it's remained relatively consistent over time, but really the changes you see are in the breakdown between dispatch time, activation, and travel time. So just quickly, dispatch reflects the time between when the 911 call comes in and when a vehicle is actually dispatched. Activation time is the time between when the entity receives a notification through when they're en route to scene. And then the travel time is between when they're en route until when they arrive on scene. So those are three components that make that up. So looking first at travel time, that's gone up slightly, but it's, you know, travel time is pretty much driven by geography, so we don't expect to see too much variation there. Activation time, that is a piece that they do have control over. This is how quickly they can get out the door, and that's a positive, and it's gone down substantially. And then finally, dispatch time, this is how much time it takes to find a vehicle to respond, and that's gone up.
There's a component in that, too. They are providing information to the caller at that point in time, right? Like they're gathering the situation, so it's, just want to make sure, and maybe you can explain that later, but there is lifesaving support that's occurring on the front end as well.
That's correct.
So, you know, if somebody's choking, you're advising what to do, or if there's information being provided, so it's not just a 911, "Hold on, please." There's active participation from dispatch.
Sorry, I had to go through the columns going here. Can I go in there? Correct?
Depending on the severity or intensity of the call, that dictates how much time has been dedicated there as well, right?
Right. Which is part of why we prioritize that dispatch position as well.
Yes.
So for mutual aid response times, this is a very similar trend, just different numbers. The total response time has stayed relatively consistent over time. Travel time, again, not a huge variation year to year. Activation time, similar trend, which is great, getting out door quicker. And then the same trend there with dispatch time, up slightly over time.
It takes longer when you're doing mutual aid because you have to find the ambulance, so it takes additional calls.
And then obviously the travel, because you're coming from Canada or wherever else.
Okay, so this is kind of busy, and I don't have a laser pointer, but the goal here is really to try to demonstrate what the cost is to operate a secondary ambulance, try to make a projection about when it might break even. The challenge is, there's not a whole lot of actual data on Car 17s. You know, as I mentioned, 200 calls over 228 shifts over the past few years. So it's about a call per shift. So that first column shows, you know, not yet breaking even based on the actual data. That's the actual average number of calls on a yearly basis. The second column is if the car was fully staffed five days a week, and if we expected it to take one call per shift, and that's where we're getting, you know, roughly that $80,000 number difference between expenses and revenues based on the current call volume. So then the third column is a break-even analysis of the second column. So we would expect, you know, if it was fully staffed, then it would be one call per shift at 228 calls. It's about 200 more calls before we would expect it to break even theoretically based on the data.
Melissa, people in the audience may not understand that. How is it that they break even? It's without reimbursements, right?
That's right. So this is a revenue-generating service, so the more calls they take, the more revenue they generate. And at this point, the call volume is trending up, but we're not quite at the point where we're generating enough revenue to cover its expenses at this point. So just looking at the trend and forecasting out, we would expect, based on 85% of all calls, we would expect that SVAA would pick up 200 extra calls per year by 2019. And again, this is a projection, but this is just an attempt to sort of look at potentially, as I just said, in terms of generating revenue, this is potentially when the costs would be covered by the revenues generated by the second car. Just a little bit on the financials. We have through 2016 audited financial statements for SVAA, and it went back five years. And it's important to note that SVAA is on a calendar year basis for the financials, whereas we're on a fiscal year. So just, we'll have to keep that in mind as we move forward into next budget cycle. But I think something to note here is the expenses and revenues, and I'm just going to flip because I think this shows a little better, that the revenues seem to be increasing. to flip because I think this shows a little better, that the revenues seem to be increasing much quicker than expenses. So that's a positive. We'll have to wait and see what 2017 looks like. The net position, just a quick look. This includes fixed assets, so that's something to note. Just a breakout there. I don't have a whole lot to say, I miss, but. Comparable communities, I took a quick look at what other towns EMS models are based on their PSA designations. I looked at 13 surrounding towns. The takeaway here is really that it's pretty mixed in terms of the models that towns are using, between independent nonprofits, which is what our model is, whether the town provides a service or whether it's a private provider. I'm sorry, this is so small, but, so this is just the detail on the 13 towns that I pulled. You can see who holds the PSA for first responder, which is typically the police department, as it is in our case, the basic ambulance provider, the advanced life support or paramedic levels of the provider. And that final column is just some notes on what the towns contribute to their EMS operations. And this is from their budget documents. I think we'll be digging a little deeper into, you know, what some of our, especially our surrounding communities are doing. But for example, Avon, that's a private provider, AMR, holds the PSA for their basic level ambulance service. The town doesn't provide direct funding, but they do provide office space in a staging area. Granby, Granby does provide gasoline, does something with payroll. It does receive funding for these, Granby was covered under Granby as well. So just a little bit there, you can see the towns that don't provide funding at all, but it just might be helpful to give some context as we consider this moving forward. So as Lisa mentioned, we're going to be working on a multi-year plan moving forward. You'll see during the budget process, we'll have something to present in terms of planning forward for potential operating support and possibly even capital.
So there are two things. First of all, I want to recognize Sean Askin, who participated in this research and this presentation, as the ambulance capacity, as chairman of the public safety committee, and also Mr. Palmeroy, who was consulted as well on this. And Melissa, thank you, that was an outstanding job. This actually required months and months of research.
It's a lot of work.
It was a lot of work, and I think it really added to our value. In terms of the types of funding we can consider, or you will consider, or the Board of Finance will consider in the coming budget year, is you can do an operating expense, and that could be through our police department or some other line item, a regular operating expense. You could do a capital expense. They are, it's like, because of the call volume is going so up, so high, the replacement need is greater than it's been in the past about every three years on the capital ambulances. And then the third is a capital nonrecurring fund, like we do with our departments, is another possibility. That would both help with the capital and reduce the operating expenses, or some combination thereof. Sean, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think you, again, we're still mowing down the numbers and looking at what the right, the right solution is going to be, but I think you're going to see from our little subgroup here, probably a combination approach of, as Lisa articulated, of operation expenditures for probably the next couple, two, three years, with then a takeover of capital as the ongoing solution here. Because what we're trying to do is have this be as minimally invasive as possible, and also as cost effective for the taxpayers as possible, while still supporting and living up to our obligation. We have to provide an ambulance service in Simsbury, and as you can clearly see from Melissa's excellent research, when we have to rely on mutual aid, the response time doubles or near triples from what our volunteers and our staff are able to provide locally. And that's simply not an acceptable solution over the long term. You know, we've been, it's been suggested that we just hire AMR. Oh, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but AMR has a staging area in Avon, but the ambulance is not there full time, correct?
They move over there.
Right. Point being is, if you call 911 and we have AMR, the ambulance might come from Southington, it might come from West Hartford, it might come from Farmington, it might come from Bridgeport, depending on where the resource is at that point in time. There's no guarantee that we would have an AMR ambulance staged in Simsbury when we needed it, or two. So just, it's been thrown out there, just hire AMR and that'll solve the solution. Well, there's a lot more to it, and that's part of what Melissa and the subgroup has been looking at, to make sure that we're providing a thoughtful solution here. So our friend is doing well.
Our friend is doing well. For those who are wondering.
Yes, we, sorry. But it's important that we look at this as a multi-year approach, so that there's no surprises for the board of selectmen, there's no surprises for the Board of Finance. So Mike's been great, Melissa obviously leading us on this. I think we're going to be able to come in short order with, I think, a thoughtful solution that will hopefully continue to provide the level of service that this town has come to expect, and Mike, your organization has done a great job of providing, so.
And you've been a great partner in working with us, trying to figure this out, what's the best financial approach. We'll continue to work in a partnership manner. Are there any questions for members of the board?
I think it's great to have this information going into the budget season, rather than playing catch-up later on. Thank you for doing that. You did a great job.
Yeah. I'll have to get my glasses on where I can really scan this, it's kind of small, but I appreciate you doing this. This is good stuff.
Mike, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I just think there's a couple points regarding, you know, utilizing a commercial service here. When we look at our mutual aid communities, and the time is a little greater than if they respond from inside Simsbury, but we have a very good mutual aid situation right now. During the day, in Granby's, there's two paramedic level ambulances, and now in Canton, starting last year, they have a paramedic level ambulance, all mutual aid to us. If we are running the two ambulances, that's five paramedic level ambulances in the mutual aid pack during the daytime hours, and that's a pretty good place to be. I guess that's all I have for now.
I beg to just, Sean, if you have the same thing, we talked about it. I have a personal experience where my daughter had an allergic reaction, and we were the first to let this call. We got the ride to Hartford. And while we were riding to Hartford at 5:00, there were three other callouts in Simsbury where mutual aid had to respond. So again, one instance, but we've seen it firsthand, where when it gets busy, it's busy, and we have an obligation to provide public safety, so.
I do want to let folks know that even when that happens, that happened in our families. We know just about this date, the year ago. But even when the ambulance doesn't get there right away, the police gets there very first, and they're trained as first responders, so it's not that you are without. It's just waiting for the ambulance. There are people there who can deliver emergency services right away, and our place has done a great job.
Dispatch professionals give great advice to people that are right there in that moment, too.
Yeah, we're in good hands.
All right. Any other questions for Melissa?
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring up Jeff Shea, town engineer, to talk about the Riverside Road status report. This actually was a project, I believe, that began in 2014?
2012.
2012, okay.
Really? How time flies.
All those signs, the signs out there.
Yep. So the reason I'm here tonight is really to give you an update on a project, as Lisa said, was actually funded back in 2012 through Steve Grant, an amount of $350,000. It included really a couple elements. One was Riverside Road, and the other one was Trent Hill Road Bridge, rehabilitation of that bridge, which is now 20 years old. On the Riverside Road piece, the primary goal of that project was to improve access to both residents and throughput of vehicular traffic during flooding events. As you know, back in, I believe, 2007 on a couple of occasions, and in 2011, I think, on two occasions, there was localized flooding there, and residents had difficulty getting in and out of their property, along with the disruption of traffic through the town of Simsbury from the east. We engaged in a pretty rigorous environmental and engineering study, but I looked at modeling the river in that area, and seeing with the introduction of Phil, racing the profile of the road, to hopefully affect better access and vehicular traffic through that area. Came up with a couple of solutions. One included what they call a mitigation of conveyance. That Riverside Road in that area is actually in the floodway, which is a highly regulated area through the FEMA process. The model actually would tell us whether it could convey the flow as it exists today. And what we found is there'd be, again, mitigation, conveyance mitigation, that would be required in other areas. So we looked at a few areas, and we could get it to work through mitigation. And we have a graphic in your package that shows a couple of the areas, so that's where we could actually accomplish that. The patient A and B and C are actually owned by the town of Simsbury, so it could be accomplished in those areas. We reviewed that with regulatory agencies. Things like architectural studies, species that are, you know, listed species, they call it, which are protected species, the box turtle, freshwater mussels, there's some plant species that would be impacted, made it very difficult, if not, you know, impossible to get approval through a process which would take probably one to two years, and cost significant dollars. So again, looking at this, looking at the options available, we didn't think it was feasible with the budget available for this project, the constraints on the actual grant, which we recently got an extension on, and just practicality to do anything in that area that would really have any beneficial impact to the residents, and had no guarantees, frankly.
And that was the major point, there were no guarantees. Even if you did all this, it could still flood.
That's right. So we wanted to bring it to your attention. We think the decision point is to not raise the road because of the complexities with that. We would want to do an improvement to the roadway, along with the bridge, which certainly needs some attention at this point in time. We would like to also meet with the residents and kind of, you know, go through this process, how we went through this process, and why we came to this conclusion. But we wanted to bring it to the board first, to make sure they were comfortable with that decision point. Basically, we're claiming the road at its present elevation because of the difficulties with the regulatory environment in trying to raise it.
Jeff, who did you speak with on this? I know you and Adam worked extensively on it. Milo and McBroom assisted you. You met with various state officials. Can you walk us through?
We did. Because the grant was actually administered to DOT, it actually gave us an easier process to kind of sit down with all the regulatory agencies collectively through the DOT process, and we met with them on two occasions. And again, we're discouraged with the opportunities and the options available going forward, in terms of there would be no guarantees, and there was, you know, there's a lot of things to overcome.
And the cost for meeting the regulatory requirements is, when you say substantial, it could have doubled, right?
It's going to substantially increase the cost. There's no guarantees, again, of success, and it's a fairly lengthy process, one to two years, to try to get to that one. And of course, that would also increase the cost of construction, both through the increasing elevation of the roadway, and through the compensatory storage area that would have to be developed. Essentially, that's a complicated situation, if that makes sense.
So it is a bit of a disappointment. I think we were hoping to resolve an issue, but it appears even if we took the corrections recommended and got through the regulatory process, which are big ifs, we cannot at this point guarantee success. Is that accurate?
That's right.
Okay. Let's open it up for questions from the board, Mike, and then Sean.
Jeff, do I understand correctly that because you are raising the road, you must compensate by creating an area for that water to go somewhere else?
That's correct. I mean, that handles the storage aspect of it, but there's also the conveyance, the ability of that channel to actually pass the flow.
Get it there. Okay.
That's a very complex area with the two bridges.
Oh, yeah.
So it makes it more difficult to kind of accomplish that.
Okay, thank you.
Sean?
In the course of this study, did you find any information about things that might be available to individual homeowners to mitigate damage on their own property?
There are programs, if they're sponsored by the municipality, where they can apply those properties, if they're what they call severe repetitive loss.
That wasn't really what I was thinking, perhaps I said it wrong. I was thinking more if there was, you know, different types of drainage on their property, you know, blooming, landscaping, anything that would help.
Tax credits or something.
Mitigate the flooding situation right on their property.
It's a complex problem, and it's not something that I could really propose any really quick and dirty possible solutions.
Oh, I wasn't thinking that you would, I just thought maybe in the course of doing this, this plan, either Milo and McBroom, maybe somebody would have said, you know, oh, if they did this, you know, in their front yard, this would help.
The real problem is access to high ground.
Yeah.
Because even if they raise their structure, they're still going to have difficulty getting in and out of that structure during the flood. So it, you know, might provide better protection for their property, but that whole access during the flood event will not improve. There's just no way to do that.
Right. I was just thinking about mitigating the damage caused by the water when it does come.
There are programs for raising their structure, floodproofing their structure, but some of it's not practical. There are other issues, such as the issues we're dealing with on this project in terms of conveyance. It could be an obstruction of flow if they raise their structure protection.
Okay. So it is super, it is super complicated and frustrating. I mean, I, yeah, I just want to mention that both Jeff and Adam Kessler, who's our project engineer, has put hours and hours and hours into this. So I think it's fair to say you looked at every possibility.
I think so. Again, there are possible solutions, but they're just not practical at this point in time. Possibly the regulatory environment will change down the road, I don't know. But port could get actually worse in terms of the wild and scenic river designation. That could actually add another layer down the road. We're not sure.
Sean?
It just seems to me in one of the compensatory conveyance zones, we're getting awful close to the sewage treatment plant, too, which just doesn't seem like a good idea.
We are, there. I mean, that's the most.
It's very diplomatic way to put that.
Positive, dependent site, but.
Yeah.
And we've vetted it a little bit with WPCA.
Has it get?
It may work, but again, it gets more into the species.
Yeah.
The impact on the edge of river, that becomes the, really, the primary issue that you have to overcome.
Correct me wrong, so does the curvature of the river actually provide some natural protection, because the water is generally going to want to go straight through the boathouse versus, I guess it goes left before it goes right?
It doesn't, only because the bridge is kind of directed, you know, kind of pointed in the right direction. It's not as big a factor.
Okay.
One of the things that's frustrating, or I guess amazing about nature, is that the river has its own mind, and sometimes it goes, and it doesn't stay in one location, it actually changes over time. So that makes it sort of both intensely beautiful, but also very frustrating if you happen to live near it.
Fair.
All right.
Appreciate your work.
We appreciate your work, and hopefully they'll understand our process, and, you know, understand that it's, this is a motive when they approach in the short term.
And then they could meet with their own, could they meet with engineers and take actions on their own?
They could. I mean, again, it's a personal decision. We really couldn't advise them on anything that is quick and dirty, so to speak.
They're going to be subject to the same regulatory process we would be, right?
They are.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, it's cost prohibitive for municipality, I would imagine, as for an individual.
So this is a pause. It doesn't mean we're totally done, but until the regulatory climate changes in a positive manner, it's, as Jeff said, it's not really practical to do at this point. But it is something we can continue to look at over time. And it is frustrating, but thank you for that update.
Thanks for your hard work on that.
Appreciate it, Jeff. Thanks a lot.
We'll go on to a presentation from Kristen Ferminet. Part of the budget that passed, Kristen, you want to come on up? There were some unintended, or perhaps intended, I don't know, consequences. One to the budget was the renters rebate, which is generally reimbursed from the state to our renters. We help fill out the applications, but we send the application to OPM, who then sends the check to our renters. And that is a mess, I think we can say. And the question is, we're not sure what the status is. We think that they're going back into session either this week or next week to resolve the problem with the rebate. But what that, what that's, that value to the town is about $63,000 in rebate. It's unclear whether the town's going to be responsible for sending those checks out, or whether OPM is going to send them out. OPM does have the money to do it. I've been in touch with Kevin Witco's office, and they are working to resolve it, asking OPM to send out the checks, but they're sort of in limbo right now. Another thing that's coming up is the budget. The state budget proposes cutting the income threshold by more than half for the Medicare savings program, and this is something that will impact many of our residents by about $1 million, a little over $1 million, or about $5,000 per person. It could have a significant impact, which means that's something I don't think we could fill the gap in, but it will mean we'll have to step up our help in other areas. And then the third thing that is in the budget. And then the third thing that is in the budget is the homeowner's tax loss for the circuit breaker discount that seniors get. That may no longer be reimbursed. So, we give discounts to seniors based on income for their housing, and we get reimbursed for it, and that's about $70,000. That would be on the revenue side. The renters' rebate would be on the operating expense side. But I'll let Kristen walk us through it. It seems to change hourly, so perhaps you have an update that I've missed.
And thank you for entertaining the motion to allow me to start earlier tonight. I appreciate that. As Lisa explained, a few weeks ago, I had put together this memo for Lisa and for your information, just to give you an update on two of the major changes that were proposed in the Connecticut tax budget that did pass and their impact to our seniors and some of our individuals with disabilities. The impact is going to be very negative to them, as Lisa explained, financially. The first is the renters' rebate program. Renters' rebate program is a program that is managed by OPM, the Office of Policy and Management through the state. Our role currently as the town is the social services takes the applications for the renters' rebate program. So, we help to screen individuals that are either seniors or disabled and are renters. And those that fit into the criteria, we take their applications, and their applications are put into an OPM portal directly. And all of their backup information is given to OPM. OPM then makes the decision as to whether or not the renter qualifies for the rebate benefit, and they make a determination on the amount that they're going to be receiving. The rebate amounts are anywhere between $200 and $900, depending on the individual, their income, and the amount of rent that they pay, as well as some other factors taken into consideration, such as utility expenses. And last year, this immediate past year that we're waiting for checks on, in our office, we took a total of 119 applications, and the projected rebate for those applications is currently $63,000. As Lisa said, we don't know what OPM is going to do and what the state is going to do. They are going back into session to discuss some of the other implications from the budget. And we've been told that they're going to revisit the renters' rebate decision. As Lisa had said, OPM does have, I think it's about $13 million in funding that was put into their budget for the renters' rebate program, but it's being held up because of the changes from the state budget. Typically, folks receive their checks by the first or second week in October, and a lot of our individuals rely on these checks to do their holiday planning and be able to buy Christmas presents for their loved ones, holiday presents for their loved ones. And this money is now being held up. And we have a lot of individuals that are calling and asking us, "When are we going to get our checks?" And the only message that we can give them right now is that, you know, we don't know for certain when the checks will come out, but that according to the budget theory, they're going to be rebated from OPM, or that the towns are going to be mandated to find a solution. I think the latest message that came out today was that the state may be paying for half, and the towns might be liable for half, but there's still a lot of questions around that, whether or not that's an end date or also the adjustments can be made to rebates. Oftentimes, what happens is the state will take a look at what the rebate amounts are and then adjust the rebates to fit their budget. So, that's one of the questions, too, is if the state would lower the rebate amounts to fit into the budget. So, that's one of the concerns.
Can we just pause on that?
Do you want to do questions for that? Can we go into MSB?
Sean has a question.
If you don't mind.
No, not at all.
Just so I understand, so last year, the state of Connecticut promised 119 of our residents $63,000 in rebates.
Correct.
And then they're not going to pay what they already promised. So, this impacts our residents going backwards and going forward?
Well, and when I say last year, it's the renters' rebate season that just concluded this past October.
But the state runs on a 630 or 71 to 630 date. So, did they pay the fiscal '16-'17 number, and we're talking about '17-'18, or did they not pay the '16-'17?
Those have been paid. What haven't been paid are the ones that were due this year. So, the ones that were due this October. Yes. Yes.
So, they preemptively pay?
What they do is they budget into their, my understanding, they budget into their budget what they expect people to be receiving or applying based on the previous year. So, they-
The program itself, so when you sign up for this, you're signing up from 71-17 to 630-17, is who we're talking about right now?
It's confusing because the renters' rebate program, when you apply, it's actually based on the calendar year. So, I'm a little uncertain how to answer that question. So, when you apply for renters' rebate, you're turning in rent receipts from the calendar year. So, the program that we just took applications for looked at the 2016 rental year. So, then the state is owing folks from the budget that we just started, which would have been paying them in the rears from this month.
So, that answers my question. So, the rental payments actually happened in '16-'17. The state pays people back. That's why it's called rebate. Now, I understand.
I'm glad I could get you there.
The fact that it took this long to explain it should tell our senators and legislators all they need to know.
It does, but for a lot of these people, the checks were, they were expected in on October, and they didn't come. And that's the crisis.
That's the crisis. Not only that, that they haven't gotten them yet, but the uncertainty of whether or not they're going to get them. And then also, you know, what the implication could possibly be to our town if we have to absorb the payments to make these folks whole.
So, and that was the first part of my question that I got away from because I got confused. So, the state promised 119 people this money, and then they were going to rebate it. So, now they've decided, even though they said yes, now they're not necessarily going to rebate it. We might have to fill in that.
That was the initial discussion? Yes. So, we thought that would be an unfunded mandate on the expenditure side of our line. So, that's about $63,000. The circuit breaker thing is a reimbursement on the revenue side. You know, we give the rebate, and then we get reimbursed. So, it's both on the expenditure and on the other. Kristen doesn't deal with the circuit breaker. That's done through the assessors, but there are sort of three social services-related negative impacts to our residents that we're watching closely.
There's probably a technicality that technically no one's been promised the money yet because no rebate letters have been issued that comes out with their check.
But the applications were approved.
The applications, the applications are not technically approved. We don't approve them.
Right.
So, that's being held up by OPM as well.
But the deadline for applying for them, I think they ended in September? I can't remember.
Yes. That's actually, that has been closed. The only way to carry forward an application is if you have extended waiting for closer circumstances and you have it certified by a physician. But then, again, it still ends at the end of September.
So, what's the horizon on, or what's the timeframe on this being worked out?
Well, the legislature has indicated, because they're getting a lot of pressure, well, you know, our legislator, Kevin's getting a lot of pressure from me. Your mom has been great, by the way. She's been giving us lots of information. Everybody's on the same page. But CCM and COS are being very aggressive on this. I think it was an oversight. We don't believe it was done intentionally, so they're just working to figure out how to get that fixed because it is something that has been very effective in keeping people in their homes.
And they have to call them all back in to fix this, don't they?
Then they are. The plan is to come back in to fix that and also the hospital issue.
I'm not quite sure it was unintentional. The same thing's happening with the Housing Authority and the RAP funds.
Yeah. It may have, I don't know.
Coming from HUG. It's the same.
Which they're giving away money.
Right. So, we're watching all these things carefully because they will have impacts on our residents. So, if you want to-
Because the gist of my question is, is how long do we let it go before we step in?
Well, so, we're going to probably another week because we expect the legislative fix to be done within the next week. And then we'll know what it actually is, and then there may be some decision making on our part. Some of it may be a mandate. We may be obligated to write the checks.
Right.
In which case, we have to follow the law, and we'll do it. But we'll watch.
We'll talk about that.
If you want to break the law, you do it on the next term. You can talk with Eric. I'm in office, we're following the law.
You've got to keep the words in business.
But we'll look at what our responses are. We, I mean, in talking with Kevin, he did feel that this was going to be a fix. And a number of the main legislators are all, they all seem in sync to get this fixed. So, but we'll see. Like you say, we don't know if it will happen or not. We've heard that before.
Yeah.
Can we reimburse, do we distribute the rebates?
No.
The state distributes them directly?
Well, the proposal, from my understanding, when it first came out, that the towns would be responsible, was that it would fall back to the towns and that the towns would then have to make the determination and then issue the rebates. And that caused quite a stir also because amongst all the towns that I talked to, because we're not prepared, or did we have the software, access to the software to make this determination?
Right.
And it would require extra staffing in the finance department. We already had those conversations. What would we do if we needed to do that? It's a very complex thing. So, it wouldn't just be reimbursing the renters' rebate checks. It would actually be some investment in staff to be able to handle the extra.
That'd be a budgetary, I guess. And it would be an annual budgetary.
Much like the ambulance analysis, once they fix it, we're going to have to sit down quickly and talk about this. Because if this is staff, and it has computer programs and everything else, we need to talk about that.
Absolutely. That's why we're watching it so carefully and why we wanted to bring it to the board's attention. I am optimistic that, you know, the others, I'm not so sure are going to get fixed. I am optimistic on the renters' rebate, given the indicators we've gotten from COS, CCM, and from Kevin Witco's. But we are watching, and John Hampton as well. You know, we're all watching it very carefully.
I'm sure he's actively engaged.
He's going to take his check first.
So, the second concern, which I believe is a much larger concern and much larger financial impact, is the proposed changes to the Medicare savings program. And as far as what I've seen, there haven't been, there hasn't been any motion on repairing this or changing this proposed change. What the Medicare savings program, or commonly known as MSP, is a state-funded program that's available to individuals that are currently enrolled in Medicare. If you are below a certain financial income threshold, you can apply to the state to be put on the Medicare savings program. The highest tier of, the best level of the Medicare savings program reimburses an individual for their Medicare Part D premium. So, for the average individual, that's about $134 a month that they are saving. And for our lowest-income seniors, that sometimes can make the difference between whether or not they're able to buy some of their groceries, get their prescriptions, or maybe even pay their mortgage. It doesn't seem like a lot of money, but when you're below $1,200 a month, it makes a big difference. The MSP program also helps to pay for the Part D coverage to an individual, which is about $34 a month. And it also helps to protect the individual from falling into the donut hole. The donut hole is not a Dunkin' Donuts treat. It's something that's a little bit tricky to explain. Basically, what it means is when you're on Medicare and when you're on a Medicare Part D prescription plan, they cap the amount that they will pay for your prescription coverage over the course of a year. And that's kind of, I guess, the best way to explain it is similar to an HSA plan where you have a high deductible and must pay that amount. When you're in a high deductible, you go into it paying a certain amount before the insurance kicks in. This is a little bit reversed, where the Part D coverage for your prescriptions, pay for your prescriptions up until a certain amount. And that amount is set by which Part D prescription plan you choose to enroll in. Once you hit that cap, you're then responsible for then another certain dollar amount of prescription coverage yourself before the Part D plan kicks in again. For the approximate average individual on the Medicare prescription drug plan, this is about another $5,000 annual cost to them. So, the calculation of just over $1 million would be doubled, almost. Just the donut hole coverage for, and the amount of people in Simsbury that are covered is $1,170,000, which would be added to the already $1,300. We did get figures prior to these changes being made, and in the town of Simsbury, we have 234 active participants in the Medicare savings program. And based on the dollar amounts and average of what they'd be paying for their Part D plan and their Part B plan, is where we came up with the just over $1 million cost. So, we're very concerned about this. The cuts to the MSP program, what it has done, it has taken the income thresholds and cut them in half. So, I can't tell you how many people will be drastically affected because we don't know the numbers as to which 234 participants fall into the higher level or the lower level, but we can approximate what this could be.
What, are you hearing, I have not heard a lot of indications on a plan to fix that. Are you hearing, what are you hearing?
I have heard nothing on the plan to fix that. The only thing that I did hear in regards to the change was that Connecticut is now kind of falling in line with the other states that have a similar MSP program. It's probably not called the same thing, but a similar program, in that most of the other states, I think there's only five left other than Connecticut, that had the higher income threshold. So, the income threshold that Connecticut is putting into place effective January 1 is now coming in line with 46 of the other states.
But that doesn't help you if you're one of the people who are getting the-
Exactly. But it makes the people who may have made the decision possibly feel better about their decision.
So, we're, so that means there are going to be some people hurting in Simsbury. So, I just want to thank all those residents who, on a regular basis, donate to social services or our food bank and, you know, ask you to keep that in mind this season and throughout the year, especially since these hardships are coming down the line.
Exactly. And I think with there not being, possibly not being changed to this, and not knowing how many people it's going to impact, as you said, the best way that we may be able to have a facility is to be able to provide services ourselves through the town, through social services, to the seniors, and help try to look for something.
And we do that regularly through food, medical, and other areas. So, we'll continue to do that. But thank everyone who makes that possible because most of that is funded through donations. Sean?
We should probably look at, if that change does stick, we should probably look at the senior tax plan and see if we need to update it to make sure that the folks that are hardest impacted here. Again, we've looked at it a couple of different times. Maybe it's time just to look at it again.
No, I think that makes a lot of sense.
And I believe we have a group, we got a veterans program as well, right?
We do, yes. We have multiple programs out there. But at the end, the last time we did this was maybe five or six years ago.
We heard when I got here. It was a while, but it was five or six years ago.
Yeah. So, maybe time to do that anyway, but in light of these cuts, it may be more prescient to do it this year. And we should do it, guys, to the extent, my recommendation would be that you do it before the budget season so that those changes can be incorporated into the budget.
Yeah, because we got to do it. Because those notifications and applications start February, March?
I don't know.
Pretty early in the year.
February.
Yeah, so we would need to have that change implemented from February now.
And that would be a loss in revenue, so it would need to be put into budget documents as well. So, the time to do it really is probably in December.
And we are also, and I don't mean to speak out of turn because it's not my program, but are we hoping for a change from the state in that decision as well?
Right.
Sean, sorry, I'm interrupting, but maybe we could get some numbers on the senior tax abatement before the budget season starts so we can start working that in. I don't know.
Yeah, we can have that for the, it would be David. David has those numbers. He gets them to me regularly. I think you did it last year, if you could just update those.
Yeah, we can get you that information.
And maybe some possible scenarios for raising the threshold or-
So, I don't know, we can do that in two weeks of the holiday, but we can certainly have that in by December.
I would suggest that we probably do the same thing we did last time, is we grab Board of Finance members, who, with two members from this board, we have the Excel spreadsheets. Obviously, you'd be included in that. We have, I think we did it a couple meetings last time, and we just looked at the impact and all made a decision, and we have to have the Board of Finance involved.
Absolutely. So, that would be, that would be a, you know, an ad hoc committee that terminates with the end of the term. So, my recommendation would be you perhaps add that to the December agenda, even though to the December agenda, even though that's a special agenda required by charter. Perhaps you could form that right away, since time is of the essence.
Oh, yeah, I'll leave it.
Perhaps our newest board of finance member could be a part of that committee.
Perhaps, perhaps.
Since you have all the information already.
We could expedite the process.
I will certainly mention it to Mr. Palmer.
I was saying you have someone else, but.
All right. Any other questions for Kristen at this point? Thank you, and please continue to keep us abreast. And as I get information, I'll pass it on to you and likewise.
Yeah, let's stay on top of that, because if we need to step in and do something.
Absolutely. That's why we're bringing it to your attention right now.
And of course, as always, if anybody has any other questions.
I don't have any.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. Say hi to the girls first. First Select Woman's report, on the front page of the First Select Woman's report, you'll see a letter from me, Mr. Palmer, Chairman of Board of Finance, and Matthew Curtis, Superintendent of Simsbury Public Schools, with just a budget update from where we are. So you can see the numbers change because the state adopted a bipartisan compromise budget, which was signed by the governor on Halloween, and results in $357,458 in reduced state revenue to Simsbury. Fortunately, the state teacher pension cost shift to municipalities did pass. This number does not include the numbers that Kristen just raised, so that's about another $130,000 potential impact, some of which we think will be fixed and some will not. And basically, the letter just sort of summarizes where we are and where we're going. But one point to point out, and if you look at CT Capital Report today, we're already in a deficit again for this year, so.
Really? Sorry.
Who would've thought?
So to think that this is a one-time fix, I think is not realistic. We're gonna see costs rising because of state pension and health costs that have been chronically underfunded for many years, and also the slow-growing economy. So that we know that there are future deficits coming, there's one today. It will grow by quite a bit. So this is not over and for a ride, but I think we're positioned well to understand what the issues are, and we'll continue to monitor them and adjust as needed. I wanted to congratulate municipal officials elected to office on November 7. I want to recognize in the audience, we've got two new members of the Board of Selectmen. We've got Chris Peterson and Eric Wellman. I'll let SETV pan to those two. They're all together so you can see.
Smiling white.
I know that this board will enjoy welcoming you to the board. The town will be holding a required close vote recanvass on Tuesday, November 14, because four of the elected offices were within less than one-half of 1% of the total number of votes cast or the total number of electors checked as having voted in the election. And final results of the elections will be posted on the town website, we expect at the end of the day on Wednesday, but possibly not until Thursday. So that is undergoing, I do want to thank our registrar of voters, who are just working like crazy right now to get this done. So very much appreciated. And this is being done not at the request of any candidate, but because required by state law. So that is what the process is, and we'll be watching it carefully. Small Business Saturday is on November 25, and we're gonna start it early with Black Friday on the 24th, and we've urged all residents to shop locally. Simsbury Celebrates is on November 25, starting at 4:00 PM with fireworks at 7:30. You can celebrate the season at the Senior Center for a holiday party on December 7, and you can sign up to reserve your spot at the Senior Center. Public skating sessions at Simsbury Farms have begun, so it must really be the winter season. So we're excited about that. I'm pleased to report that the Simsbury Police maintained their state-of-Connecticut accreditation. It's a nice accomplishment to do that, as well as the National Accreditation Kalia. The latest edition of the Senior Center communicator is hot off the presses, so you can check out all the great programming meals and classes that are offered there. I wanted to remind folks that Connecticut Energy Assistance Program is still available. Thank heavens. But we'll be watching all of them. And if you have not yet, please inspect your mailboxes before winter storms come. Remember, if you can shake them, they are likely to be blown over by the force of the snow. It's easier to make those improvements now than it is when the ground is frozen, so please take a look at that. Town Forest Park improvements are still underway, and it's very exciting to watch that. The town's Simsbury Charter and ordinances are now available online in electronic format, and you can find that on our website. And thank you to Erica Butler, our town clerk, for initiating that and getting that up and running. We had a wonderful ribbon cutting at Headdress Beauty Lounge. That Mike was out with me, I think, right?
Yes, he was.
Yes?
I did not get my nails.
I remember, nor did I, but it was a lovely, lovely place. Welcome to Simsbury. Glad to have you here. There is a ribbon cutting to welcome Dr. Douglas M. Hope, a dentist at A Plank Hill, and that is coming up on November 15. A ribbon cutting and welcome to Hello Lovely, which will be on November 16, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and a ribbon cutting for Tai Ocha, who's been here for a little bit, but we've never done a ribbon cutting for them. So we will be doing that on November 28.
Gotta sneak another one in.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have been, I haven't gone there yet, and everybody keeps telling me how good it is.
Wonderful.
I'm actually really excited for that.
Forget the budget for new scissors.
We've got grant writing for businesses at the library on Wednesday, November 29. And I did want to let folks know that the Conservation Commission is looking at the old growth proposal that Susan Messina brought to the board, and they will be doing their next meeting. They'll be looking forest management in general, because they are the ones charged with developing the priorities and plans. And I did want to let folks know there is no cutting going on in any of our forests. There's no sale of wood, nothing. So to the extent people are worried about that, it's just not happening. And they are relooking at the forest management plans in general, and we'll be working with Mr. Tonner on that. So I thank Mr. Tonner for that. I did want to let folks know that an application was filed for the destruction of, I guess, the dormitory and some other areas in town along Hoskins. And with that, we are, I'm requesting this board authorize the first select woman to submit an application for a historic preservation enhancement grant through the State Historic Preservation Office for a study to determine the viability of a multi-property submission for inclusion in the State Registry of Historic Places. That will enable us to fund getting this registered on the State Registry, which does not require homeowner or permission or approval. But it is something that we think is worthwhile. We will, of course, reach out to the two historic homes in the area as well, five in a hundred.
And I'll add, I'm empowered by the Board of the Historical Society to let everyone know we had, we unanimously agreed at our board meeting the other night that we will present whatever information we can in support of that grant.
Oh, thank you. And the other thing that I have asked Marguerite Carnell, who's been working with us on the Deepwater Wind proposal, is that they file an objection to the destruction of these properties. This will, if that goes forward, it will then enable a 90-day delay so that SHPO and other organizations can take a look. And as you know, in going through the Deepwater Wind, we've really had a chance to look at some of the historical nature of the barns and the dormitories and their relationship to Dr. Martin Luther King. So we would like, before anything is done to them, to really give a thoughtful review before these sorts of things happen. So the motion is for, to authorize me to do the grant, but there may come a time if for some reason the historic district commission can that, or if council recommends, we may file an objection to the proposed destruction of the barns and stuff like that from the town itself. So that may be coming as well. But for tonight, may I please have a motion to authorize the first select woman to submit an application for a historic preservation enhancement grant through the State Historic Preservation Office for a study to determine the viability of a multi-property submission for inclusion in the State Registry of Historic Places.
Still moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Kathy, do you have a copy of this? Okay. We will now move on to our action items, and begin with action item A, to approve tax refunds. We have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $14,179.63. Still moved?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Melissa's got, Sean Kimball is out ill, and so we have Melissa filling in for Sean, but I'll give a brief update on the next one, then ask Melissa to supplement what I've said. Before you is item B, to approve fiscal year supplemental appropriations to close capital projects. I'm gonna ask you guys to draw a line above capital project closeouts, reallocation of capital funds, because they're gonna, we're gonna be discussing two separate types of projects, those that need supplemental appropriations and capital closeouts and reallocation of capital funds. There are gonna be two different approaches that we're gonna do. So before the board is our request from the Director of Finance to approve and recommend to the Board of Finance supplemental appropriations totaling $15,846 pursuant to Section 809(c) of the Simsbury Town Charter to close three completed capital projects as attached. And those are Ena Hall improvements for $4,657, Simsbury Farms renovations for $6,614, and Highway Pavement Management for $4,575.
Need a separate motion for that?
Not yet. It's gonna, it's gonna take me a little while to get through. This is fairly complicated. The three capital projects exceed their total prior appropriations, as detailed in the submission. In closing out the project, there are two sections, as I mentioned, above the line, the fiscal year 17 supplemental appropriations needed for the three projects totaling $15,846. And those will require Board of Selectment action. And below the line, the capital project closeouts and reallocation of capital funds. These will not require Board of Selectment action, but are listed for your information. For the three above-the-line closeouts, this is essentially an accounting adjustment for auditors as the projects are completely unfunded. The average was covered by bond premium funds and through the general fund, but because the authorization was for less than what was spent, the $15,846 difference, we are doing the correction today with the recommended supplemental appropriation request. It is important to note that the remainder of the additional projects listed under the capital project closeouts and reallocation funds are below the line, did not exceed their prior appropriations and came in under budget. In many instances, approved capital projects anticipate future transfers from reserves or bond proceeds, but the ability, but the availability of cash from other completed capital projects allows us to fund the projects without doing so. Basically, the bottom line, enclosing all these projects and doing the supplemental appropriation is positive, and we will free up $176,622 in cash. The Director of Finance is recommending to the Board of Finance to use this cash to partially fund a previously approved capital project, that being the squadron line boiler replacement, reducing the need to borrow. Bond Council has actually confirmed to us that both I and the Director of Finance have the authority to reallocate unexpected bond proceeds without going to either board. But this will be brought to the Board of Finance as a matter of course, as we have always brought these items to the Board of Finance, and will continue to do so, I might add.
Oh, really?
Or else somebody gets cranky.
So I'm gonna open it up to questions, because it is a little complicated, but really, we're talking about $15,000 that just need a reappraisal, because we did go over budget, although they're the complete and they've been paid for. Sean?
So how did we go over on projects that had language that said not to exceed?
Well, sometimes things happen, and they, I don't know, I can't explain that. They just went over a little bit.
That can't happen.
Well, they're considered de minimis, and they would use bond funds to pay for it.
One dollar is, I don't care if it's a dollar or a million, those projects were approved by this board, the Board of Finance.
That's why we're coming back for supplemental, that's why we're coming.
How were the funds expended?
I can't speak to that. That was done before. I don't know.
It was an unauthorized appropriation.
It was. That's why I'm putting it to you.
How were they expended?
They, as I mentioned to you, came from bond.
We can't even go over by a dollar in a fiscal year.
So as I mentioned to you, they were used from bond.
But how did we, so?
Premiums and the general fund. I don't know.
But how did the bond, so if we approved, bonded, and appropriated the correct amount, how did we expend more and have money from the bond?
So Sean is out sick, and we can certainly bring him in to explain that. But Melissa, can you add to that?
Yeah, so those three projects, they, you know, there was, Mr. Kimball was saying there was much to pay for, but the original authorization was slightly lower. And when we go back and dig, we see that particularly with the two that were paid from bond premium, when the bonds were issued, there was premiums that were applied to each individual project. So there's actually cash on the balance sheet that they could spend for those projects. You know, the original budget was, in the case of Highway Pavement Management, $2.5 million, due to the bond premium applied to that project. So it's a little bit extra money in there.
So what I would say is, you know, we don't generally close capital projects. This is something. An assignment I gave to Mr. Kimball and that the Board of Finance did. So when we took a hard look, we discovered this discrepancy. It is a $15,000 discrepancy that we are bringing to your attention for supplemental appropriation. Our staff certainly does know not to go over. I will say, if you look at all the projects, we are in the positive $176,000. So this is why we are bringing it to your attention.
We are, except that, so if I look at the ones below the lines where apparently we don't have any authority, some of these were cash, and that cash was never put towards these projects, so now we're gonna use other cash?
Well, some items come in under budget.
Truck wash, we paid for at least twice.
No.
I mean, we funded that with cash in two different years. So why is the truck wash on here from funds needed to close? There was a cash appropriation for that.
So what I can do is have Mr., you know, I thought about pulling this, but we do, it is only $15,000 that needs to be approved tonight. We can bring in Mr. Kimball for the remainder. Unfortunately, he was out ill.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be a pain in the neck, but I mean, this is more than $15,000.
If you ask about the three cents for the streetscape, then you're in trouble.
You know.
I will say that each one has its story. It took a lot of research.
To get them closed, that's why these have never been closed, because each one does require a tremendous amount of research. A lot of this happened prior to Mr. Kimball.
Yeah.
You can see where they are. You can see that they are.
Let's working with the auditors on this.
To be clear, I'm not upset with anybody. I just, I don't understand, because when we approved funds for the emergency generators in '13 and '14, there was cash from the debt service line item that should have been, that should have been put towards those projects. So what happened to that cash that we're now using different cash to pay for those generators?
So what line are you on?
I'm on, below the line where I'm not supposed to be, but I'm there anyway. '13 and '14, the emergency generators. We approved, you and I were on this board.
Yes.
We approved the money for those generators, and cash should have been allocated from the debt service line item that year for those generators. So if it wasn't, why not? And where did it go?
So I will say that some of the allocations that are made can be transferred, like if from bond refunds. There are different bond financing and line items. The Director of Finance does have authority to make adjustments on how the things are paid within his authorities.
And I get that, but if we authorize $257,399.49 to buy a truck wash, and that cash is used elsewhere, that doesn't make any sense to me.
So I can't explain that. I will have to ask.
I know you didn't. I'm not, I'm not picking on you. I just, from an accounting standpoint, I know there's accounting procedures, but this, this is more than just $15,000.
No, it is not. It is $15,000 that needs a supplemental appropriation. If you look at the bottom line, it's $176.
But your second line, where again, I'm not supposed to be, says the funds needed to close. That means the money doesn't exist.
So it brings the project balance that could be bonded down from $624 to $800,000. If you look at the very bottom line, you can sort of see some of that.
I understand that, but we're using found money to fund things that we should have funded?
I'm not sure if it's literally as that, Sean. I think it's, our funds are made available as needed. I don't pretend to have answers for anything that we're looking at here, but these may be more timing issues than anything else. The, it's, my understanding is that with the top three that require the supplemental appropriations, that's something that has been reviewed pretty carefully with the auditors, and that's something they're, that's a solution they're quite happy with, so.
I will say, you know, during the operating season, there are times when different departments overexpend their line item above what is appropriate, and then we do supplemental appropriations all one year.
No, and I get that, but the difference here is, is when we pass the budget, we don't say not to exceed. And every capital project that we bond specifically states in the legal language, not to exceed.
So it's true, and that's why we're bringing it to your attention, to do a supplemental appropriation. I could have not closed any of the capital projects, and you guys would never have known. I mean, I think nobody has ever.
That's not true. We should be getting written up for this from the auditors.
Well, they've been in conversations with them. I will say $15,000 in a $95 million budget is considered de minimis, but it's not something we'd like to see in the future. And they're making corrections and working with the auditors so that these don't happen again, but it is $15,000 on a $95 million budget. And any auditor's conclusion would be this is de minimis, not that we should ignore it, and we're not, which is why it's before you tonight. And so they're working to make corrections on that.
And for those three, those three above, the one below the line did not exceed their prior appropriations, but the ones, the three above the line, which we discussed it, and we do need action on that in order to clean it up for the audit this year.
No, I'm sure, I'm sure there's an accounting issue for why the funds were not designated for the generator, but the way it's presented, it's being presented as such as we didn't, there was a million dollars of cash available in '13, '14, on top, you know what I'm talking about, on six, because we just. We bond, we have a $6 million bond premium, and we have a million dollars in the debt service line.
Which generator line are you looking at, under school projects?
Town projects. All I, I guess all I want to hear from, from the Finance Director and the accountants is that this is when we're funding it, and we're not actually, we didn't not fund it when we should have. This is how it's supposed to happen from an accounting standpoint. As that's the answer, I have no objection. I just want to understand.
So we can have Sean agreed to come back on the, if he had been, he had a high fever, I told him not to come back.
Yeah, no, I don't want him here when he's sick. That's fine.
And we came very close to not showing you the stuff below the line, but wanted to do that for the matter of transparency.
Probably shouldn't have.
Well, I would just encourage folks, when you see this, to call in advance. It's very hard to answer questions without having advanced notification of what the questions are. We can always get you the information, but it's helpful to have the questions in advance, especially when the packs have gone out. So.
With all due respect, we've been a little busy over the last week.
Well.
And heads up from the Finance Director, when we've overexpended, an illegal appropriation auto have happened.
Charlie's been like a bloodbath.
I understand that, but.
Your problem would be in a position.
And I, you know, I would just remind members of this board not to question motivations.
I'm not questioning motivation.
This has been done.
But don't question my time.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, well, I think it is helpful that when you have a submission, if you have questions to staff, it is helpful to get those questions in advance, so that we can come prepared and not have to. we can come prepared and not have to tell you we can't answer it until the next meeting. If you wanted to answer it at the meeting, if you ask the questions in advance, we can have it for you. If you don't, they have to wait till the next meeting and we will get you that information.
You are absolutely correct. That's my fault.
All right. Are there any other questions on this? So, I will say that this, the reason why this is being done is because we took a deep dive. Both Mr. Palmeroy and myself asked Shaun to look at closing capital to try and get things cleaned up over time. As you know, Mr. Kimball has been in this job perhaps less than two years. We've had multiple Directors of Finance, and so we are cleaning up some work that has been done in the past, and we're trying to be as transparent as we always are. We open this to the public. We lay it out there and we try and be as transparent as we can. We will get Mr. Kimball in to ask, answer specific questions, but if you do have specific questions about a specific line item, if you could get those to Mr. Kimball in advance so he can be prepared to answer them, that would be helpful. Our next meeting is on the 27th. All right. With that, may I have a motion to approve and recommend to the Board of Finance supplemental appropriations totaling $15,846 pursuant to Section 809(c) of the Simsbury Town Charter to close three completed capital projects as attached.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Nay.
Kathy, can you please reflect the votes of those who voted for it? That would be Elaine Lang, Lisa Hevner, Cheryl Cook, and Mike Payne. And the one against Mr. Shaun Askam. Okay, the motion carries.
We can't agree 100% of the time.[712.82][712.82](Laughter).
We have now before us Item C, approve recruitment of members to the Board of Assessment Appeals. Before the Board is a request from the Town Assessor, David Gardner, who's here with us tonight, and the Board of Assessment Appeals requesting the Board of Selectment to recruit and appoint members to the Board of Assessment Appeals pursuant to the ordinance passed by the Board of Selectment in 2016 and referenced in our current town code under Chapter 5 Assessment Appeals Board, Sections 5-1 and 5-2. The request is to accommodate the possible volume of appeals in the coming season. The Board has a few options. I recommend that town staff send out a request to Town News and Announcements that we have the Personnel Subcommittee review and recommend to the full Board. If that is amenable to the Board, it would just be through a normally established Personnel Subcommittee. We wouldn't need a motion to create a Subcommittee. It would just go through the normal course of business. The other option we could do is create a Subcommittee to do this as we've done with, I think, the Technology Task Force and the Economic Development Task Force and Community for Care when we appoint those. So, those are the two options. David, do you want to speak to anything on this?
Just a quick review. Approved the ordinance March of last year. It allows the increase of membership to divide the work among the school members and allows for the pledge of alternatives to be sure that we have the number of members we think we have. That's what's scheduled. We're getting it done.
Thank you. Thank you for your members of your Board. We appreciate their efforts here. It's not a glamorous job, but it is a very important. All right, questions from the Board?
Think it's appropriate.
I think the, assuming my co-committee members would agree, that the Personnel Subcommittee might take this up. It seems like, you know, it's a one-time thing. We don't need to create a whole separate organized committee involving additional expenditures of time on behalf of the committee members to staff.
So, maybe that there's an overwhelming response and you have lots to choose from, or it may be that we.
It could be, but, you know, we can do it.[860.32][860.32](Laughter).
Yeah, they'd be happy to take this on.
Okay. Chris, thank you in abstentia.
Yes.[867.94][867.94](Laughter).
May I have a motion to recruit and appoint two members of the Board of Assessment Appeals to serve for the 2017 assessment year ending September 30, 2018, thereby expanding the Board to five members and recruit and appoint two alternate, alternate members to the Board of Assessment Appeals for the term expiring December 2, 2019, and one for the term expiring December 6, 2021, a total of three alternatives for the Board of Assessment Appeals. The terms of the alternates are the same as the term of office of the elected members of the Board of Assessment Appeals.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, David. Before you, you have a motion to approve supplemental appropriation from the Board of Selectmen.
I'm gonna step out, please.
Oh, thank you. Approve a supplemental appropriation from the Board of Selectmen and recommendation to the Board of Finance to cover the costs of a close vote recast. Before the Board is a request to approve this supplemental appropriation, the amount not to exceed $5,000 to cover the costs associated with the statutorily mandated close vote recast of the November 7, 2017 municipal election and recommend such appropriation to the Board of Finance for its approval. I will point out that this will be an over expenditure of their line item. We did have the option, I'm not coming to you for a supplemental appropriation and just over expending, but with the transition to the new form of government and a new Board of Selectmen, we did want to highlight it to the Board's attention. It may be that the Board of Finance, as they have done in the past, does not take this up until May because we may be able to pay for this within the operating expenses that we have appropriated thus far. Per Connecticut General Statute, Section 9-445, a close vote recast of the November 7, 2017 election is required when a margin of victory is less than one-half of 1% of the total number of votes cast for the office, and that's, those two offices affected are the first selectman and the Assessment Board of Appeals. And for offices in which the margin of victory was less than one-half of 1% of the total number of electors checked as having voted in the election, that's the Planning Commission and the ZBA. The recast will be for all the elected Boards and Commissions, because once you do it, I mean, you just, it's the same process, so it happens for a while.
The whole ballot.
The effort will include the recall of the head moderator and not less than six other election officials who examine and reprocess all ballots counted by the tabulator and by hand for all districts townwide. The recast is estimated to cost about $3,000. A supplemental appropriation of up to $5,000 is requested to ensure adequate funds to cover the cost. Only the funds necessary will be expended. The reason why we upped it to 5,000 is because they had to come up with their budget estimates very quickly in a short amount of time and without much time to study what the actual costs would be. So, we did want to put in a cushion, but they will not expend beyond what is needed for the recast. That way, they don't need to have to come back to the Board. I do want to point out to members of the public, this recast is not being done at the request of any candidate. This is something that is required by law. So, I open it up to questions. All right. May I have a motion to approve and recommend to the Board of Finance a supplemental appropriation in the amount not to exceed 5,000 to cover costs associated with the statutorily mandated close vote?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We've got Jeff here.
Thanks, Mike. I always forget to call you in.
That's okay.[1086.33][1086.33](Laughter).
I forgot you were here.
Yeah, before you, Item E, the multi-use connector grant Bloomfield to Terrifield. Before the Board is a request to authorize the acceptance of a grant in the amount of $1,020,000 authorized the first select woman to execute a commitment to fund memorandum with the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation to construct a multipurpose trail from Terrifield to Bloomfield adjacent to Route 187 in cooperation with the Town of Bloomfield. An authorization to execute an agreement with the Town of Bloomfield for cost sharing relative to the project. We are still waiting on, actually, I think we did get a draft from Mr. DeCrescenzo. It's not yet been completed. Bloomfield has not yet had a chance to review, as I understand, right? So, we'll be working with the Town of Bloomfield. As a background, the towns of Simsbury and Bloomfield were recently notified of the approval of a joint grant application under LOT-SIP, which is different than LOW-SIP, in the amount of $1,020,000 for a portion of a multi-use path from Main Street and Terrifield southerly to a multi-use pathway in Bloomfield that is currently funded and is anticipated to be under construction next year. This section will form a continuous 2.85 miles path that would end at the Village of Terrifield. Town staff has been working closely with Bloomfield staff and this is being proposed as part of the East Coast Greenway route. The financial impact to the town, the total cost of the project is expected to be 1.74 million. The Town of Simsbury, Simsbury's local contribution is 291,360, and it was included as part of the Town CIP Capital Improvement Plan, and Bloomfield's is $437,040. The Town of Simsbury will take the lead on the project. I'll open it up to Jeff to add what I missed.
That's pretty much it. We chose to take the lead on the project since we felt it had more impacts in Terrifield than it did in the Town of Bloomfield. It gives a little more control over the project, too. There's a delta in here that you probably are gonna ask a question on. The total project cost is 1.7. The commitment, the fund letter only talks to 1.5. The difference is the design costs that are outside the participating portion of the grant. The grant actually pays for construction phase and also install costs, which is inspection, testing, that type of thing after, during the project. So, that's where the delta is, the total project cost versus the grant. We're anxious to get started on this project. We can, it's nice that we don't have DOT administering it, where we hope so we can, we can drive the schedule.
We love DOT.
Excellent.[1249.33][1249.33](Laughter).
Other than that, it's been a very cordial relationship with Bloomfield in getting to this point, and we expect it to continue.
That's great.
I have a quick question. I guess probably everybody has been hearing some questions on this project. Is there any plans to have maybe something on the website, something, you know, sort of a progress report? How's it going? What are we, what are we thinking, you know? Because I know it's going to impact a lot of residents and it's going to be very prominent. You know, people are gonna see it a lot.
Yes. As a matter of fact, as part of the LOT-SIP guidelines, we have to do a public information meeting on the project early, so we probably will do that in January or February. Beyond that, we can have, we certainly could do a website update for the project and keep that, make people aware of that.
Well, our meetings are not usually well-attended on those, but.
But they are on the website.
But, you know, seeking information out on the website is pretty effective, so I think it would be good, you know, just for, yeah, the public information, since the impact is going to be huge and there's going to be a lot of questions, so.
No question, but we could certainly do that. We have some documents that we can actually place up on the website.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
Get people thinking about it or get them excited about a public meeting.
Exactly, yeah. Well, and just so that, you know, if issues come up, you know, people will be aware of it and there won't be any, you know, panic, rumors, anything.
Well, so this was the result of an open session where they was first, three years ago. We had a meeting and careful to talk about this options, talked about it before, it's left in. This is reflective of a regional cooperation with a neighboring town. So, we're very pleased that Bloomfield was willing to work with us.
Oh, yes. It's great. I just think that, you know, because there is going to be a big impact, we should be as transparent as possible and give as much information as we can, you know, to the public in a very public way. That's all.
Happy to do that. We do that, I think, on all projects. Jeff comes in.
Yeah, you know, pictures are good and diagrams.
We understand, you know, from the first meeting, I think we understand there's gonna be a lot of interest.
A lot of interest, yeah.
And we'll provide as much information as we can on the website.
Great.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to authorize acceptance of a grant in the amount of $1,020,000. Authorize the first select woman to execute a commitment to fund memorandum of the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation to construct a multipurpose trail from Terrifield to Bloomfield adjacent to Route 187 in cooperation with the Town of Bloomfield, and authorize the first select woman to execute an agreement with the Town of Bloomfield for cost sharing relative to the project subject to Town Council's approval. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, Jeff.
We have before us Item F, for Jerry Toner, approve auction of park maintenance vehicles. Before the Board is to request, a request to authorize the auction of park maintenance vehicles to the public through a sealed bid auction advertised to the public. Vehicles for auction will include a 1979 Ford F-600 dump truck, a 1997 GMC 3500V dump truck, and a 2000 Chevy Cavalier gasoline CNG fuel. Jerry, can you speak to us what this is about?
Well, Lisa, thank you. For the years, we've had periodically, in some of these auctions, we've done a couple of them in conjunction with the Public Works Department. We've done some with parks and golf together. And oftentimes, a lot of this equipment we will put up when we go out to bid, we'll put it out as a trade-in, and sometimes the vendor will be interested, many times, or they will not. In this case, we didn't have any takers, but in the past, when we've done these, we have had folks that have, for whatever reason, you know.
It happens.[1491.63][1491.63](Laughter).
So, it's worked in the past, and we're hopeful that they, these may find a home and we might get a couple of dollars for them, as opposed to having taken away, so.
The dump truck is older than Shaun. I'd just like to point that out.[1509.23][1509.23](Laughter).
And I had a Cavalier wife.
Good job, good job getting the most out of your equipment, Jerry.
Can we make sure the pack board knows we're selling the truck in case they want one?[1520.23][1520.23](Laughter).
You have trouble.
Please, please do. I don't want to go through that again.
Are there any, any further questions on this?
No, thank you for being creative, as always, Jerry.
I have a motion to authorize the auction of park maintenance vehicles to the public.
So moved. Second.
I'll go with Mike on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Jerry.
Jerry, why don't you just stay right up there, because the next one's yours, too?
Cancellation.
We have before the Board a request from the Director of Culture, Parks and Rec, Jerry Toner, to revise and approve, to approve the revised cancellation policy approved by the Culture, Park and Rec Commission on October 26, and approved, which was approved unanimously. Department staff surveyed other towns in the area before proposing the revision. Jerry, can you walk us through the proposed changes?
It's an administrative policy we felt just needed to be updated, upgraded. You know, with the volume of programs that we have and lessons and things like that, there are numerous situations that come up when people, you know, their plans may change and some of them are certainly very understandable. But we also need to be able to secure staffing. We need to be able to enter a new agreement with outside contractors who may need to secure staffing. So, we do need to have that lead time. And we just want to make people aware of this. I don't know that we've ever had a situation where we could not come to an agreement. Someone has a family matter, a medical condition, whatever, we're able to work it out. But we want people to be a little bit more aware of our situation. And we also, in this, give the flexibility, you know, to the town manager, first selectman, you know, certainly use discretion if they feel or we can recommend, you know, they make an exception here. But again, our program staff did talk to, I believe, seven or eight other towns, and everyone has their own, you know, their own circumstances. But, you know, the big thing is just trying to make people aware that, you know, we do need lead time. We can't, you know, when we're dealing with outside contractors, we need to be able to have an agreement with them as well.
Because it's a reliable source of revenue that we anticipate having to pay for instructors and classes.
Right, exactly. And oftentimes, it's the difference between a program going and not going, and, you know, we run a fine line with it. So we just want to make sure that we're able to follow through.
I open it up to questions from members of the board?
Looks reasonable to me.
Agreed.
Okay. If that may have a motion to approve the recommended revisions to the Culture Parks and Rec creation cancellation policy?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Jerry, this one is yours, too. Item H, accepted donation in the amount of $3,680 from the friends of Sinsbury Farms. This is for two score, scoreboard, this is for the purchase and installation of a wireless upgrade package for the operation of two scoreboards at the Sinsbury Farms ice rink. The two scoreboards are between 19 and 12 years old and in need of improvements. The improvements will also help with marketing to outside groups. And Jerry, if you could talk a little bit about what this is, because people may not understand exactly what they are.
Sure. I'll give the non-technical view.
Right.
You know, first, I want to say that, you know, the friends, since they're inception, have been looking at projects, and we've thrown some out. But I think this was one that they felt really fit their, kind of their niche, something that's, you know, an improvement that's an enhancement that maybe the town otherwise might not be able to fund. They've tried to stay away from major capital projects. But basically, this is, and Paul Simeon, who wrote the narrative on this, to his fellow, you know, board members, they did an excellent job. And the wireless connections, it's a more reliable connection. And we experienced a situation, as Paul cited up at the baseball field of Memorial, where it wasn't so much the scoreboard, but the controller is really the guts of it. And when it went down, it's not something that we could just readily have delivered the next day. We went through a two-week period with no scoreboard, and it was certainly was, was not, it was far from a good situation. When we're trying to attract users in here, whether it be high school hockey programs, our own programs, we need to be able to rely on that scoreboard. And so this, and this is the other thing, they debated a little bit, should we have the backup unit? And for the cost involved, I think they all agreed that it was, it was money well-spent. So it's a more reliable option than what we have. And again, I think to all our users, whether it be youth hockey, the high school, the others, we'll have the assurance that we don't have to worry about it. You know, there's nothing worse than, you know, a scoreboard goes in the middle of the game, everything stops. A lot of frustration and angst on, on the part of many. So we hope to avoid that. Now, I want to thank Paul Simeon, Sarah Kramer, and Tom Cross, who carried this project through. And the friends were good enough to really expedite their process. They've got a good process that needs to be followed, and they were good enough to do a lot of it by email so that I could get it to the Park and Rec Commission in a timely manner. So I appreciate their willingness to do that. And if it gets approved tonight, we've been in touch with hand and engineering. We've not purchased the controllers, but we have let them know that we hope to have it, you know, delivered as soon as possible, so we can get it up and running.
All right. Any other questions for Jerry on this? First of all, thank you to Sinsbury Farms and Friends of Sinsbury Farms. We appreciate that. May I have a motion with our thanks to accept a donation from the Friends of Sinsbury Farms in the amount of $3,680 for the purchase and installation of a wireless upgrade package for the operation of two scoreboards at the Sinsbury Farms rink.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Before us is item I, to authorize, the first left, to authorize the potential construction of basketball courts and refer to the planning commission for Connecticut General Statute Section 8-24 referral. Again, this is a Sinsbury Farms project. Before the board is to authorize the potential construction of basketball courts at Sinsbury Farms and for an 824 referral to planning. The Sinsbury Farms master plan completed in 1998 recommended the construction of basketball courts at Sinsbury Farms, where there were formerly two tennis courts. Members of CP, the Culture Parks and Recreation have requested that the project be funded through the park improvement funds and/or donations. The project, you may recall, was included in the fiscal year 1718 park improvements appropriations if funds were available. We anticipate construction will also require some donations beyond the appropriation. And Jerry Toner has been in discussions with the Friends of Sinsbury Farms as a possible funding source. Project will not be constructed unless we have adequate funds to do the construction. And Jerry Toner will come back to the board when funding is secured and before initiating this project. This has been long in the waiting. We're excited to see it happen. Jerry, you want to talk us through where it is and?
Yeah, you know, as you mentioned, this was included in the Sinsbury Farm master plan back in 1998, really probably the only major project that hasn't been completed up there that was included in that master plan. And a couple times with some park improvement projects, we've cited that as a project we'd like to do if funds were available. Unfortunately, you know, to date, that, that has not happened. We've had other pressing needs. But the friends have also identified as a project they'd like to see happen, and the commission, I have commission members that are working along on potential fundraising efforts. So basically, what I'd like to do is, you know, with your approval, you know, put it through the land use process, have all the approvals in place and the planning in place. So if that funding does, you know, come forward and with whatever funding that we can have, if that project can happen, we'd like to have all the approvals in place. That's really it. So it certainly, as you said, it would not happen without coming back here for approval, but at least we could do a lot of the legwork in the meantime.
And there are plans by the Sinsbury Farms, Friends of Sinsbury Farms, to do some fundraising for this project because it is something that we feel the community will support.
Excellent.
Open it up to questions?
Makes sense.
Sounds good.
May I have a motion to refer the construction of basketball courts at Sinsbury Farms to the planning commission pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 8-24?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
And please extend our thanks to the Sinsbury Farms, the Friends of Sinsbury Farms. Before you, you have motion J, or action item J, to authorize the Sinsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center to raise funds for the ticket booth walkway bricks. Before the board is a request to approve the Sinsbury Meadows PAC's intention to raise funds for the walkway and ticket booth by engraving names of donors to the project on the bricks in the walkway similar to what was done when the facility was first built. The approval for the ticket booth came before us, as you may recall already, and the walkway before the board earlier in the year. In consultation with council, he did feel that this was a material change in what was presented and should come back to the board just for your information and approval. But since the fundraising part through the brick, engraved bricks, was not used at the time it was brought to us, so it is now before you. Linda is out of town, so cannot be here when we spoke, so we sort of led the way, Linda and Mark on this, but I did want to bring it to you for consideration of a motion.
So do we have to accept them as a gift once they have them, or how does that work? I mean, I have no problem with it, but.
So the whole thing is, we already did accept the gift.
Okay.
But it's just enabling them to fundraise on town property to pay for the gift, which is typical. I mean, we did that with the veterans. They did that when they built the Sinsbury Farm, I mean, the PAC initially. So this is, the design will be consistent with other engraved bricks.
And is this addition to the original plans okay with all the relevant planning boards? I mean, I realize it was, it was approved at one level.
So I don't know that it needs to go back to design review.
So there's, I wouldn't think it would be, but, you know, you never know. Sometimes it's going to be.
I mean, we can do it subject to any land use approval that may be necessary.
It's red brick, not black brick, you know.
I mean, they're just, I mean, they're basically going to write Sherri Cook on a brick. It's the same brick, right?
As long as the surface is smooth enough.
They're going to throw your brick.
I mean, that's, I guess that's where, that's where's the only planning.
We can do the motion to work in, to work in concert with the Director of Planning to ensure consistency.
Well, as long as it.
Well, ADA compliance was more my concern, just keeping an even, even surface. After, after that was our one concern with the ticket booth itself.
Well, I mean, we, we went through a lot to, to get the ticket booth, right? So I would hate to see a lot of bricks that, you know, upset that plan in any way.
So we can do it subject to approval by design review if the board is more comfortable with that.
Fine, whatever you want.
That's fine, as long as the surface is good.
As long as it's all, you know, fits in the original plan.
In the note to Mr. Rabbit, we will ask him.
The motion should be that provided there is no material change in the construction policy previously approved.
Nice.
No material change.
Second.
Okay. I'll go with Sean and then Elaine. To approve the selling engraved bricks to raise funds for the ticket booth project and walkway, provided there is no material change in the design approved previously.
That's what I moved.
Yes.
Aye.
I say it just for the clerks.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I'm glad you remembered it.
Yeah, that was pretty, that was pretty impressive, actually.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously because the clerk does tape it, and it's helpful to have the motion in.
Absolutely.
Instead of having her have to try and piece it together. Before you, we have an item to accept a donation in the amount of $4,000 from the Hartford Foundation with our thanks, the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving for our thanks, with our thanks to support the Sinsbury Social Services Department. The Hartford Foundation for Public Giving has donated $4,000 for Sinsbury's Cheese Day, Bread Day, Food Closet Programs, which assist low-income residents of Sinsbury. They have a motion with our thanks to accept the $4,000 donation to social services from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving.
So moved.
Second.
I'll go with Cheryl on the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Next, we will go on to item I.
L.
That would be L.
Let's come to this.
L is a, L is a.
We have too many items. The item is for Sinsbury Regional Probate Court Fiscal Year Supplemental Capital Request. Before the board is a request from Probate Judge Cynthia Becker for $6,000 supplemental capital request for the installation of a sliding class window unit. The cost would be shared proportionally with our regional towns. Sinsbury's share of the project would be $2,276 and funded from Sinsbury's available fund balance in the Probate Court Special Revenue Fund that we have already in existence, so not from the general fund. Contribution from member towns would total $3,724. We have confirmation of contributions from Avon, Camden, and Granby, but hopefully Joanne was able to provide for you tonight. Did you get those? Okay. And I do want you to know that occasionally there are threats made, unfortunately. People say anywhere from unkind words to actual threats. When that happens, the police are alerted and made aware, and obviously, the police department is working in concert with the probate court. And at this point, we feel that they have it well in hand, but this is an additional precaution that we feel will, that the judge and I support in providing extra protection for them in this area. Are there any questions? Okay. May I have a motion to approve and recommend to the Board of Finance a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $6,000 to pursuant to Section 809(c) of the Sinsbury Town Charter for security upgrades to the regional probate court.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Amy, you taking care of?
Yeah. Okay. Huzzah.
It's the best kind of an unanimous.
I know. Pre-check.
The certified local government grant. Tom, that's the ship out. Okay.
Oh, and A, we took that one, too.
All right. We will then go on to appointments of resident, I didn't even know it made it on to the agenda. Good job, Joanne.
She's on it.
She is.
I know. May I have a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Darren Pete Cunningham, Republican, as a regular member of the Conservation Commission effective October 20th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Margaret Dushenko, Republican, with our thanks, also with our thanks to Darren, I forgot to say that, as a regular member of the Aging and Disability Commission effective October 19th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to acknowledge the resignation of Jay Paul Lanza, Democrat, with our thanks as a regular member of the Design Review Board effective October 16th, 2017?
So moved.
We'll go with Cheryl.
Second.
And Mike on the second.
Okay.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
I got to do the last part.
You're in the doghouse.
I know.
They have a motion to appoint Ronald Anastasio, Democrat, as a regular member of the Housing Authority with an expiration date of April 1, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to appoint Mary Sandra Fleet, Republican, as a regular member of the Housing Authority with an expiration date of April 1, 2022?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to appoint Mary Sandra Fleet, Republican, as a regular member of the Aging and Disability Commission with an expiration date of January 1, 2019?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to appoint Jennifer Bachelor? Do I have that right? Republican, as a regular member of the Board of Education with an expiration date of December 2nd, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. You have a review of minutes for the October 11th, 2017 meeting and the special meeting of November 8th, 2017. I'll give you a few minutes to review those minutes, and if you have any changes, please let me know. Otherwise, those minutes will stand as final.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the meeting from November 8th. I always thought Joe Tracy's name did not have an E in it.
It, it, it has since I was a kid. He was like my neighbor growing up, and it was spelled that way, yeah.
Tom, can you double-check that? Tracy is right? Okay.
That's how I remember it.
It does.
And I didn't update my calendar, so I'll abstain if we have to vote on the November 8th one because I slept through it.
You're all good.
Are there any other changes? Okay. As we go on to leads and subcommittee reports, at the special meeting, I did give an update on Deepwater Wind. And I'll ask Melissa, Melissa, can you please post the memo that I gave to the Board of Selectmen on November 8th under correspondence on the Deepwater Wind site? And we'll, we'll email that to you. Actually, I asked Joanne to, because I won't be here tomorrow.
Lisa, it's actually part of our minutes.
Oh, it is part of the minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yep.
Well, then you don't need to do that. Wow.
Yep. It's there.
Nice.
All right. Well, we appreciate that.
You're going to be in the doghouse with me. Be careful.
So for those who want an update on the Deepwater Wind, the hearing was closed on November 2nd. Both Mike and Elaine were there, along with multiple members of the staff. Council for the town, Abdi Crescenzo and Jesse Langer are working on our briefs, final briefs for the signing council. So that is underway, and those are due December 2nd. So that remains under progress. All right. We will now go on to personnel subcommittee, and I'll ask either Cheryl or Sean to give an update, since Chris is not here, on unaffiliated employees.
Sure. Jerry, we can tag team this one if you want, but we, we discussed as part of our normal annual process to make sure that we are appropriately adjusting unaffiliated town staff's compensation in line with the realities of the budget and obviously making sure that we're staying in line with neighboring communities and candidly competitor communities to make sure that we're keeping our talent. We intentionally waited until after the budget process was fully finished to, to review this. I will say, I thought that we had approved, we were fine with the recommended 2% across the board, but I believe we had talked about an additional amount for, for select woman's discretion.
I will say, everyone did receive excellent reviews, so I am anticipating giving everyone the full 2%.
Right. Yeah, because we, what we had talked about was if there was inequities with ranges or other places, if, at your discretion, if you, if there was additional funds needed. But if there are no additional funds needed, then this fine, we're, we're fine pulling back that recommendation. But we wanted to make sure we gave you the flexibility because obviously, you have the obviously you have the expertise of what these folks are doing and their performance, so.
I have not done the town-by-town comparisons and discrepancy in ranges, that's something that Personnel Subcommittee generally does, so.
Well, we really meant it to be just as a performance review evaluation.
This is the simple, this is the off-year, but we did not have, given that this, the focus was this, you know, this year was a cost-of-living adjustment, and that everyone had done it well, and that there was really not going to be a specific effort to, to address the market reference rates issues, I think the, at least the recommendation at this point, I think, is to stick with the 2%.
Okay, we were just trying to respect, obviously, that you were, you were in charge, and you needed it.
Well, I appreciate that.
Additional funds, we, we wanted to make sure you had what you needed.
Okay, maybe we'll take the additional funds.
Go on, that's fine, collectively, we. So we, I guess what we're looking for is, I'll make a motion to approve the 2% cost-of-living increase for the town of Sinsbury's unaffiliated full-time employees for fiscal year 2017, 2018 as recommended by the Personnel Subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll just add, and thank you.
Can we have the rest of the vote? Aye. Aye.
These are retroactive, just in the submission.
Yeah, absolutely, sorry, I left that part out.
That's okay.
Because we were waiting for the state, so.
We were, and it was a prudent thing to do, and these are within the budgeted amount, and we had budgeted.
Absolutely. These are appropriate numbers, absolutely.
They are appropriate numbers.
Very much so.
And we appreciate our staff who do an excellent job on a regular basis, really, looking at other towns, which I love, ours are real, we really do have outstanding staff, and to our staff, we offer our sincere thanks.